Green. Flitman, F.L.I.T.M.A.N., 400 Cituit Avenue. Here we are again. I really don't know how this ordinance made it. I don't know how this ordinance made it here. I'm still a little bit confused about the process, but I look forward to discussing that at the next city council meeting after the city councillor has time to review the process. Just like I said at the city council meeting, I'm still saying that this ordinance is way out of line. At the end of the day, this ordinance is set up to criminalize a very marginalized community, a community of our neighbors, people, people with families who are unhoused in our homeless population. The people you are referencing in this ordinance could be your constituents. Homeless people vote, and they matter. Many of our homeless population often suffer in silence, suffering from a long list of physical and mental health issues. While most do not necessarily choose to live outside, sometimes it's their only option. And the fact is, and yes, this is a fact, that when people live in encampments, they feel safer, they feel less isolated amongst a lot of other positive things. Shelter living is not always the resolution, especially in this situation. The evidence has shown that some shelters have certain criteria one must meet in order to spend a night, for instance, like being sober. Some shelters deny entry to the LGBTQ+ community. They deny access to folks with criminal records, people with kids, blah, blah, blah. The list goes on. If we look to the experts, they'll tell us in order to stop generating homelessness, we need to provide affordable housing. Affordable housing aimed at those with very low incomes. We must provide free mental health services, case management services, housing vouchers, have them meet with people that can help them navigate the system. We need to fund and create prevention programs geared at those people who are at a high risk of becoming homeless. Figure out where we as members of the Cranston community can find these resources to help ourselves. Yes, ourselves, this is everybody's concern, not just the unhoused population. We could look to HUD where this kind of data is studied and where the information about ways to reduce the homeless problem can be found. Don't criminalize the homeless. Work for a solution. The issue of homelessness is not going to be resolved by continuing to involve politics in it. An ordinance such as this is not kind, it's not compassionate, and it's not humane. It's actually deadly. This is a human rights issue. Every person has the right to adequate housing. What do we need first? First, we need you, members of the ordinance committee, to listen to your constituents that are here today. We don't want to criminalize the homeless. Please don't approve this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in the chambers who would like to speak on DocuSign? Sir, I know you have a camera there on the aisle. If you could just make sure that we have space so folks that are coming up have a clear passage and are accessible. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tom Wojcik, Levin Hall Place, Cranston. Recently, the Supreme Court gave cities the right to prevent Joseph and Mary from sleeping in the park. Because the Supreme Court ruled against basic value of humanity, it doesn't mean that we in Cranston must act inhumanely. There are effective ways to address and deal with the crisis of homelessness. Very few people choose to be homeless. Homelessness typically comes about because of economic situations and hardships. Most people who become homeless do not choose to be homeless. Typically, it's the result of dire economic circumstances that are not in the control of the people who become homeless. I was thinking about this ordinance, and it's like the mayor might write an ordinance that prohibits the Pawtucket River from overflowing. It's banks because it disrupts public peace, decency, and causes economic distress. Would this ordinance stop the river from overflowing? No. The city can't stop or prevent it from overflowing its banks until it addresses the core issues that are causing the river to overflow: infrastructure and climate change. We cannot prevent the river from overflowing, nor can we prevent homelessness by banning it. But if we look at the causes and circumstances and work with individuals, groups, and agencies that understand the problem, we can find effective and humane solutions. This city must complete a comprehensive plan. Homelessness must be part of that plan. The human and respectful action this committee can take tonight is to not pass this ordinance and to recommend a housing and homeless task force to study the issue and present options, not an ordinance to inhumanity. One additional point is that the ordinance shifts the burden of homelessness to our police department and would make it considerably more difficult for homeless people to find alternatives if they have arrests and fines. Homelessness is not a policing issue. It's a human, political, social, and economic reality of our society. Cranston can become a model city that demonstrates it cares, or it can pass an ordinance to inhumanity. I ask you to care tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who's here this evening? Sir, I am going to ask you, I apologize. Can you just move the tripod to this side? It is really going, it is blocking accessibility in the front. I don't want anyone tripping. Can I ask you to put it on this side? Would that be okay? Right, to your right? Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, sure. My name is Vivian Sutherland. I live at 26 Bainbridge Ave in Providence, Rhode Island. I grew up on Mapleton Street, right off of Pontiac, and went to ES Roads School when I was younger. I'm here to oppose the ordinance. I'm involved in local renter organizing in Rhode Island, and I want to ask any of you who've maybe ever been a renter, you know, did you ever have a termination of tenancy made against you in Rhode Island? It only takes a month for any landlord to say, hey, I am giving you no real reason other than maybe I want to raise your rent. You have to be out in a month. And then if you're not out in that month, then they can bring you to district court to evict you. So in Rhode Island, it's perfectly acceptable to give someone only a month until they're homeless. It's honestly criminal as a society that we do this to people. You know, where's the housing? You know? If we're going to criminalize the unhoused, you know, they did that in the Soviet Union. Did it work there? It didn't. But at least they gave people like 2 million houses every year that they built. You know, comparable at the time, you know, to the population of the United States, like that was a lot of housing. They actually at least provided housing. I'm not saying that they were great at all, but it just doesn't work to criminalize housing. We need to give people housing. We need to build housing. I would really urge, like the other gentleman was saying, for Cranston to create some type of housing task force to make sure that you can bring in the types of development that you need to actually build low-income, affordable housing, and the shelter-type supports. You know, homes fix the unhoused problem, not criminalizing people and having them end up, you know, in our prison system. It's just going to be a bigger issue for taxpayers at the end of the day. So I really urge you all to not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on items?
Hi. Can you hear me?
You can lower the microphone. Yep, there you go.
Thank you. My name is Megan Elizabeth Jackson. My name is Megan Elizabeth Jackson. I live at 193 10th Street in Providence. I'm here as a recent law graduate, a Rhode Islander, a neighbor, and a concerned private citizen. My biggest concern is the clear effect of this proposed ordinance would not be to actually eliminate homelessness or do anything to address the concerns of people about safety and public health. It would simply push people who are already at their lowest further into the edges of their already marginalized status and further away from the resources they could access and the communities that they are a part of. As Rhode Islanders, I feel like we shouldn't be kicking people while they're down. It is not in our best interest to emulate West Coast policies. It's not really great to be a Northeast elite if you're not that elite anymore. Throwing away all of someone's personal effects and giving them a $50 fine, is it going to make them less homeless or your community any safer? It's going to exasperate the desperation of people who, as the Colonel that is in charge of your police has pointed out, have criminal histories. And it is going to further create tensions with legal authorities and give these people more reasons to evade the state and its power. I understand that immediate Band-Aid solutions look nice and they're politically expedient, but we have to think long-term, not just as local communities, but as a state, as to what the ultimate effect of ordinances like this are. I also understand that the Supreme Court recently ruled that this kind of ordinance is within your right to institute constitutionally, but the Constitution is a legal document, and it's not a moral compass. Just because the Supreme Court says that it's okay doesn't mean that it's ultimately beneficial to community or represent the values of Rhode Islanders as a whole. The people most affected by this ordinance are without homes, not hope. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a saying in the homeless community, just because you
Oh, sir, I'm sorry. Can I just have your name and address?
Sure. My name is Pat Ford, 42 Oriental Street, Providence, Rhode Island. There is a saying in the homeless community, just because you take my tent doesn't mean I can pay the rent. My name is Patrick Ford, and I represent Libertarian Mutual Aid, an all-volunteer organization that among a number of projects runs the water project, delivering water in bulk to homeless encampments, meal kitchens, and sidewalks across much of northern Rhode Island. Currently, LMA supports in excess of 24 locations. The demand for our services exceeding the resources we can muster. Our roots are in the forced eviction of the Providence Charles Street encampment. Attending a press conference, a young man asked me if I had any water. Opening my truck, I showed him two pallets of bottled water. We delivered 40 packs to each tent. We do this weekly now. The realization is that despite the millions spent, no source exists for water to drink and bathing in the year 2023 and 2024 is stunning. Meanwhile, the state of Rhode Island continues to waste millions, unable to complete occupancy on pallet homes in Providence that cost millions, paying excessive salaries to a failed housing department who show little progress despite years of operation. Cities like Woonsocket spending hundreds of thousands on a dignity bus that sits idly. Not-for-profits like cap agencies whose CEOs make hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, acting largely as a pass-through for government aid. The last salary for the now-departed CEO of Crossroads, $345,000. Clearly, there is a great deal of money to be made off the backs of the poor. The point: Despite millions of dollars spent, there is simply no place for these folks to go. Dispersing in homeless encampments kills. Social service providers lose contact with the most vulnerable. Even more alarming, the fragile sense of community that exists in these encampments is destroyed, with individuals often going it alone, and those struggling with addiction vulnerable to overdose deaths as no one is present to administer lifesaving Narcan. This ordinance is nothing less than an abomination. It does not reflect the basic values of the Rhode Islanders that I know. Just because you take my tent doesn't mean I can pay the rent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here on the chambers? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Rebecca Carroll. I live at 109 Richard Street in Cranston, Ward 2. I'm here to voice my vehement opposition to the mayor's proposed ordinance, which is an amendment to the ironically titled "Offenses Against Public Peace and Decency" section of the City Code. I earned my master's in public administration from URI and completed my capstone research on homelessness in Rhode Island. I'm here today speaking in my capacity as a private citizen and as a resident and voter in Cranston. While the language in the ordinance refers to camping, let's be clear, this is a direct attack on people experiencing homelessness. No one is camping recreationally on city-owned property. People simply don't have a place to live. To put the severity of the homelessness crisis into context, the number of people experiencing homelessness in Rhode Island increased 35% in just the past year and has more than doubled since 2020. There were more than 2,400 people experiencing homelessness in Rhode Island as of the January 2024 Point in Time Count conducted by the Coalition to End Homelessness, which also runs the statewide CES hotline for people seeking shelter. The largest increase was within people living unsheltered, meaning they're living in places deemed unfit for human habitation, including tents, cars, and simply on the streets. Since 2020, the number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness has increased nearly 400%. Rather than expanding shelter capacity, driving affordable housing development, or instituting renter protections in the city, the mayor would rather criminalize the very existence of people experiencing homelessness. But you cannot criminalize and fine people out of being homeless. The only solution to the homelessness crisis is housing. That includes shelter beds, but it also includes permanent supportive housing and Housing First programs and policies that prevent homelessness from happening to people in the first place. I have plenty of data and research from my masters that I'd be happy to share with members of the council and with the mayor's office, but I know our time's limited, so I'll end with this. There are not enough shelter beds or near enough affordable places to live in Cranston. People who are experiencing homelessness would be even further financially devastated by a $50 fine and the destruction of their personal belongings, as is written in this ordinance, not to mention the abject cruelty of treating people who are in need of support and assistance with punishment rather than kindness. I urge the council to reject this proposal and maintain a modicum of decency for people experiencing homelessness in our city. Criminalization is not the answer. It doesn't work, and it won't work here. People experiencing homelessness are our neighbors and your constituents, and they deserve the basic human rights of stable housing and a government that protects them rather than attacks them and criminalizes them for their current circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. To Zoom.
Hello, my name's Kimberly Decoupe. My address is 560 Prospect Street in Pawtucket. I'm one of the organizers over at there. You might have heard of us. We do, we're a nonprofit, and we do a lot of work with people who've been incarcerated before. And we're also doing a lot of work in housing. So I got to meet a lot of people who are being evicted, or they have already been evicted, or like, you know, homeless people who are just, they're just out on the street. Many of them can't find like shelter. Many of our shelters are kind of booked up across the board. And I guess it's just kind of bewildering to me why, why are we here doing this? Like, everyone here knows we have a huge housing crisis. This is not like new situation. We know that the rents are really high. A lot of you look old, so you have kids a lot of times, and those kids will tell you it's really expensive to rent out here, even if you have a college degree. So what are we doing? We know we don't have enough affordable housing for the people who already live here. We have the Boston refugees moving in. No offense, I like them, but they're moving in. And we're here testifying about an ordinance that wants to criminalize people who can't find housing. What is the average rent in Providence right now? It's like $2,000. And I doubt it's any better here in Cranston, because it's not better in Pawtucket where I live. In Pawtucket, as long as I've lived here, used to be known as the hood. And the rent is high over there, too. Central Falls, same thing. I mean, Central Falls is a place where a lot of people didn't want to live. Now it's expensive also to live in Central Falls. So again, why are we here commenting about an ordinance to criminalize people who can't find housing when everyone in this room knows that housing for everyday people, you know, people who make around 40, 50 grand, is incredibly hard to find? And let alone if we're talking about buying a house in this state. It's really expensive. I mean, when I was going out canvassing for people, and this is in Pawtucket, I remember canvassing some guy's housing. He was like, that house that's right in front of mine, sold for $600,000. Now, what the, what is a house in Pawtucket doing, being sold for more than half a million dollars? Can somebody please tell me? And this house was not cute. Like, it was, you know, one of those starter homes that people used to get in the 70s that was like 30 grand or something, like, one of those homes, it was more than half a million dollars. And if you've ever met many of these homeless folks, they're dealing with a lot of trauma, right? Drug abuse. A lot of times, it's like family abuse. These people end up in these situations. It's like a convergence of systems failing. And I just think if you're not going to do anything about housing people, which you're all politicians, so nobody expects you to do anything, at least don't make the problem worse, right? We don't need these people in the jails. Why do we need these people in the jails? We already know in America we have too many people in jail. So why would we criminalize somebody just because they don't have enough money to rent a $2,000 apartment? I mean, I'm young. A lot of the folks who are around my age are either living with their parents, or they have a lot of roommates. You don't even get to choose your roommate anymore. You just get to have whatever roommate comes around and can afford the rent alongside you. That's the situation. That's for young people, right? Many of these people have college degrees, and that's the situation for them. So no, don't go through with this ordinance. At the very least, don't make the problem worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here in the chamber? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Smith, and my address is 73 Babcock Street in Providence. Thank you. I teach at Rhode Island College in the School of Social Work, and more relevantly to this conversation, I've done outreach in the homeless community in the state and including the city of Cranston for the last 18 years. And so I've had the privilege over that time of having a lot of conversations with people who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness, and increasingly, people who are in and who are being relocated from encampments. And many of my talking points have already been said, so I'll be brief. And there's not, this is not a, there's not a profound issue here besides the one of humanity. I know the Supreme Court has legally mandated this, legally allowed for this, but that doesn't make it morally right, and it doesn't make it make common sense. As others have said, the number of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness has increased exponentially in the state in the last five years, and more and more of those folks have been forced to stay in encampments and to make those encampments a source of what safety they can have. And as someone who spends a good amount of time in those spaces weekly, I can tell you that people are trying to make the best of a terrible situation, not of their creating. Homelessness is a manifestation of all of our structural failings that are visited upon people who have a combination of individual and structural vulnerabilities in their lives. No one is in an encampment because they want to be, but people are in an encampment because that's the best option they have, given what we all collectively as a society have given them. And to add more punishment to that, to fine someone, to throw away their belongings, defies both humanity and common sense. People, as others have said, cannot afford the rent, and so charging them money is going to do absolutely nothing to solve those structural issues. It also makes it harder for people to work on their goals and for us as outreach workers, as case managers, as advocates, to support them in addressing their goals. And there should be goals alignment here in the sense that people don't want to be sleeping outside, and no one, none of us who have a conscience wants them to have to sleep outside. And so I would love to see this conversation go in the direction of having a novel and truly interesting and creative and thought-provoking conversation about what does it look like to actually collaborate with people who are experiencing this thing to create some long-term solution? And that's something that we, as Rhode Islanders, and particularly on the city level such as here, have a really unique opportunity to do, to really get at this issue. We have a lot of people who are homeless in this state, but we have a number that we can get our heads around, right? If we think creatively, we can house a few thousand people. That is not beyond our collective imagining to do. And the last two things I'll say is, first, if we're going to have that conversation, if we're going to have any conversation about this, let's have it honestly. Let's not be disingenuous about the language we use. None of the data support that clearing encampments fosters public safety or public health. So let's not pretend. Let's not put that veneer on the conversation that we're having. If it's about criminalization, if it's about we don't want those people in our city or in our state, let's have that conversation. But if we want to have a conversation about public health and public safety, that would be a really interesting conversation to have, and I would love to have that. And the last thing I'll say is, again, I do street outreach several times a week, and if anyone wants to come out with us and have the kind of conversations I get to have with people who are experiencing this directly, I would love for you to come out with me. I'll be here. I can give you my contact information, and I mean that. Because I think when you see it, and when, I know maybe some of you have, but if you get to have those conversations with people, I think the next conversation about this might have a really different tenor to it. And again, I really look forward to that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kelly Meira. It's M.E.A.R.A. I'm here on behalf of the ACLU of Rhode Island. I'm also an attorney. I live at 71 Applegate Road in Cranston. The ACLU of Rhode Island wishes to register its strong opposition to this punitive ordinance proposed by the mayor and aimed at the city's homelessness population. Homeless population, I apologize. In addition to making illegal any temporary shelter on city property, shelter that the ordinance itself recognizes is erected for the specific purpose of providing protection from the natural elements, the ordinance would impose a $50 fine on violators and provide for the destruction of the individual's personal property after 24 hours. This proposal is extraordinarily cruel. We know that some municipalities across the country are seeking to take callous advantage of the U.S. Supreme Court's recent decision in the Grant Pass case to punish the homeless in a myriad of ways, but it would be unfortunate to see any municipality in Rhode Island follow suit. Forcing homeless people to move when they have nowhere to go and engaging in the surreal attempt to find them when, almost by definition, they have no money, are deeply harmful and completely ineffective responses to a serious societal problem. The proposal's further heartless plan to quickly dispose of the little property that these individuals have, rather than retain it for a reasonable period of time for retrieval, raises serious constitutional concerns independent of the Grant Pass ruling. Like the city's previous ill-fated attempts to ban panhandling, Rhode Island's serious homelessness crisis cannot be solved by punishing the victims of that crisis. The ACLU urges the committee to reject this misguided proposal and to instead encourage more useful, compassionate, and systemic solutions when addressing this critical issue. Thank you.
Right ahead. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Steve Alquist, S.A.H.L.Q.U.I.S.T. I'm a reporter. Live in Providence. I've been writing about homelessness now for many years, maybe five, six years. It is, I just want to tell a story about what it means when you throw things away from people who have so little. Two years ago, in Woonsocket, there was an encampment that was razed by the mayor, and some of the people who were there, it weren't there because they were at a doctor's appointment or working, because many people who are homeless have full-time jobs and need to work. They threw away everything in this one particular tent, and after some time, I managed to track the woman down and talk to her. Among the items that were destroyed that she will never see again and were destroyed were the only picture she had of her deceased son, and every other family photo she had, all her documentation, which means her birth certificate. Anything she didn't have on her at the time in her purse was destroyed. That's all her clothing, all the other stuff. That took, the stuff she could get back would take months to get back. The stuff she couldn't get back was gone forever. And I just want to point out that when you be first become homeless or experience homelessness, the first thing that happens is you have to choose what stuff I will carry out of my home, whether that's a house or an apartment. Whether that's a house or an apartment and you choose what are the things that I can't live without? And you find mementos. I know a person who brought all her baking. Stuff with her pans and stuff because or. Things for cookies and whatever. And she brought it with her because she was hoping someday she'd get back into a place. And, um, be able to cook again and bake. And then after some time, of course, you know, she had to move and she had to move. And the things that were heavy, like baking supplies were left behind. Um, because you don't give it at all up at once. You give it all up in pieces. It's a constant drag on your very sense of self. And I think you need to really think about that if you. Are considering throwing things away. I'll also add that in Providence. They have a process by which if they're going to go into an encampment and throw things away. They scoop everything up. They bring it to, um, Cemetery, North Main Street. And it's stored there inside a building for, I think, sixty days or thirty days or whatever, but. They don't monitor it. So anybody can go in there and say, oh, that's my stuff and just take it. And people have lost their stuff through just people going in and having, or it's treated so badly. It's not done, or they say what we're salvaging here is anything that looks good to us. But in reality, the company they contract with to do it. Doesn't think any of it looks good because it all looks like trash to them. So they just throw it all in the trash. And very little is taken. So. There's no real way to do this in a way that's, uh. Decent or human or. Like respectful of the lives that you're impacting. So I just want to put that into perspective because like I said, I've done this a long time. And I would have really, really recommend that any of you here. Go to pick up Megan on her offer and go visit some encampments because it is a life-altering experience. I've never visited an encampment without going with a person who, like Megan. Um, and I think it's really important to get to know these people before you decide you're going to destroy their lives. Because that is what this ordinance intends to do, destroy lives. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to speak on documented item? Before we move on to folks on Zoom? No? All right. Our public comments are closing.
Drake Patton.
Drake Patton, six eighty-four Natick Avenue. I'm profoundly moved by the comments of my neighbors. And my neighbors beyond Cranston. Um, I've spoken before on this and. I want all of us to think about how close we might be to a moment when our lives are not secure. I think. I don't know, maybe not for you, but for me, I think that could be. A family member that needs something, uh. Many of us can relate to this. And tonight we heard about the moral compass that we need to have despite the Supreme Court. We heard about cruelty rather than kindness. Someone said, I ask you to care. Others said bewilderment. And Steve Alquist just explained to us these very specific things he has encountered. These are our brothers and sisters. And I don't know about you, but I never assume I'm very far from that. I also assume that this council, who I respect. Has the compassion to understand. That our best selves involve solutions. Not the mayor's. By I think. Thoughtless, cruel ordinance. And I ask everyone, regardless of party. To really think about our lives and our families and to think about what was said tonight. They were all so beautiful, so powerful. And the people among us who have less, who have fallen on bad times deserve our care. They deserve everything. And I trust that you can do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Rosenberg.
Hi, uh, this is Karen Rosenberg. I live at forty-six Bow Street in Cranston. Can you hear me okay?
Ca- Karen, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're just making sure that we can hear you okay. Can you try that again? I'm sorry, just a little louder.
Sure. Can you hear me okay now?
Yep, there we go.
Okay. Um, uh, I'm, I live at forty-six Bow Street in Cranston. Um, I am, uh. My purpose in commenting is to ask the ordinance committee to. Vote against this ordinance and not return it back to the, um, to the full council. Um, I want to thank, um, the people who came here, um, from Cranston and beyond Cranston to. Share their expertise and their experience with this issue. I guess I just want to say that I find it disappointing and even offensive that this. Ordinance was introduced. Um, it does, it seems like the administration could have done. A little bit of research themselves before they proposed this and, you know, required everybody to take some time away from their evening to be out here. To talk about it, um, because it doesn't seem like there was much thought behind it. Um, we've got so much expertise, um, in this room tonight. Um, and people could have explained why this is counterproductive and doesn't really solve the problem. Um, that it appears to be addressed at. We elect our leaders to solve problems, not to just do, you know, simple and lazy things. Um, and I personally am not aware of. Very much of anything that has been done in the city, um, in the past few years. Towards addressing the problem of affordable housing. And I think that, you know, that's what we expect and should be able to expect from our. From our elected officials is that you will, you know, do the hard work. Of figuring out how to solve the problem instead of just sweeping it under the rug. So, um, I guess that's what I, that's what I'd like to see. Um, and I appreciate that people took the time to come in here. And point out, you know, all the reasons why this, this ordinance doesn't make sense. Isn't going to solve any problems, is going to create problems, is inhumane. Um, and, um, should be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Tom.
Susan Blake.
Good evening. Uh, name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Susan Blake. I live at one seven three Grand Avenue. I would like to thank the council or the. Committee for your time here tonight and for allowing me a couple of minutes to speak. I also wanted to echo. The sentiments of so many people who spoke so eloquently here tonight and also note that. I was deeply touched by the. The stories that I heard and the experiences of people who are much more. Um, well-versed at, uh, dealing with the homeless population in Rhode Island and also here in Cranston more specifically. With, with respect to this ordinance, I would, I would beseech you once again. To listen to that little voice inside of you that is saying, this is not right. This is not right. This is morally reprehensible. And I would ask that you not pass this ordinance any further than this room here tonight. I would just like to add a personal story having to do with homelessness. I won't give you a lot of the details. But I do have a family member. A former family member who, uh, after a divorce became homeless. I'm not sure if it was by choice or not. But this person, um, also had serious mental issues that went untreated. And lived on the streets of Providence for many years and then, uh, went on the lam. And went MIA for several years without communication to family. And was eventually found dead behind a dumpster. And the only. The only personal property that this person had on them when their body was discovered was a Sharpie pen and a notepad. This breaks my heart. Please do not pass this ordinance. And let's set up a special commission to work on the homeless situation. Specifically here in Cranston, if we can't deal with it on a higher level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jess Salter.
Just name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Jess Salter, Sixth Bond Lane here in Cranston. I am here tonight to speak as a resident of Cranston, but also as. Um, someone who works at Amos House, which is one of the state of Rhode Island's largest social service providers, providing services to. Um, many of the different populations that we're speaking about tonight. Um, we serve about fifteen thousand individuals every year who come to us in crisis. And among those services are a continuum of housing that runs all the way from shelter housing to permanent supportive housing. Included in that housing is currently the fact that we run the state's largest family emergency shelter, which right now, tonight. There are fifty-seven families sleeping in a shelter. That counts to a hundred and sixty children tonight. And even with those fifty-seven families in that family shelter. There are sixty families on a waiting list to get into shelter housing. Through the coordinated entry system. And I know a few people have thrown around the term CES or coordinated entry system. But to give you a little bit of context of how that works. It is a very necessary, but incredibly cumbersome. Process by which people who are unhoused. Have to. Call and get on a list and navigate technology in order to be even. Eligible for a shelter bed. Shelter beds that we are currently. Two thousand short of in the state of Rhode Island in order to keep everyone safe and under a roof. So it's no surprise that there are tents all around the state because we simply don't have enough beds. Right now in the state of Rhode Island, in order to afford the average two-bedroom apartment. You need a minimum wage job. You need two and a half minimum wage jobs. To be able to afford the average two-bedroom apartment. That's obviously not realistic. For someone who is supporting their children or living independently by themselves. And it is. While it is very encouraging to hear all of the words being said tonight in support of this community that we're so trying so hard. To protect. It is incredibly frustrating to know that we are putting this amount of effort. And this amount of work into addressing this instead of the actual work that needs to be done. In the state and in the city, we need both a short-term goal that allows for emergency housing to keep. All of these individuals and families safe. And it, we need a long-term. Project for the state that allows us to move forward so that we don't have well over two thousand people. Unhoused every single night in the state of Rhode Island. The country's smallest state. If we really are worried about drug use in these tent encampments. Then let's invest money in recovery housing. Let's talk about the shortage in recovery shelters. Right now, Amos House runs the only, the state's only recovery-focused shelter housing. If you are worried about safety, then I hardly think that it is in the best interest of what I'm sure is our overtaxed. And, uh, understaffed probably police system to be able to go out and disrupt. Peaceful people and take their belongings. If you are worried about sustainability for housing, let's talk about rent stabilization. There are so many conversations that we could be having right now that are more useful than this one. I. I hope that. All of the words that you've heard tonight encourage you to act with compassion and I hope. I hope that this ordinance dies. This is the second time that I also have, have, um, spoken out against it. And it is, um, quite honestly ridiculous that so many of us are still having, um. To say these, these words in support of, of people. The, the sixty families that are on that waiting list and those fifty-seven families that are sleeping in a shelter tonight. Those are your neighbors, many of whom are Cranston residents. And they are, they, all they want is to be safe. They want, uh, a fresh start. They want safety and they want stability. And this ordinance actively works against that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else? Before we close, public comment?
I'm not seeing anyone new around here, one.
All right, public comments are now closed. Moving on. To new matters before the committee. The first item is seven dash twenty-four dash zero-two. That is ordinance and amendment of chapter ten point four zero of the city of Cranston. Two thousand and five entitled miscellaneous traffic regulation. Panhandling ordinance repeal. This is sponsored by Councilman Donigan. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember Donigan.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Um. Uh, this ordinance is pretty straightforward. It would repeal the. The titled panhandling ordinance that the city council passed in two thousand and seventeen. Um, like many of the people that spoke earlier this evening, when this ordinance was first. Uh, introduced. I think first it was shot down in twenty sixteen and then when the council flipped from republic, from Democrat to Republican control in twenty-seven. Uh, for that term, the ordinance was passed and, um. Uh, just as the ACLU and many members of the public, myself included, testified at committee and council meetings during that time. That the ordinance would likely violate, uh, First Amendment rights. Um, not to mention. Human decency. The, uh, it was found that this did in fact, um. Violate First Amendment rights and after years of, of, uh. Lawsuits and costing the city over, over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, the mayor, uh, Mayor Hopkins did make the correct decision to enter into an agreement and enforcement was, was stopped. So I appreciate the mayor doing that, although I don't appreciate that it was passed in the first place. Um, this would repeal it and, uh, there's been a lot of talk of the grant pass. Um, SCOTUS decision from a few, from two months ago. I sent this in the day after that grant pass decision came down because. I don't know what that extension, that, that decision's ex, ex, extension could mean for legislation like this. And if a new administration. Or any other administration with this on the books wants to maybe take this a step further and, and see if this is something that we can do now with. With the new Supreme Court ruling. Um, to push it, I think we should just get rid of it. We're not enforcing it. It's wrong. We shouldn't have done it in the first place. Let's get it off the books and that's what this ordinance does.
Councilman. Council President Moreno.
Thank you. Um, I just thank you, Councilman Donigan, for, um, the background to this. And, um, again, because this is an ordinance. That predated my time on council and I think pretty much everybody in this room with the exception of perhaps you and, no, okay. So, um. And consistent with the litigation against the city and the settlement, I think this is the, uh, only option that we have since it's not an enforcement. Thanks.
Director Moretti.
Uh, just, uh, the ma- the mayor does support this, basically eliminating this from, from the books. And you might recall, uh, that that lawsuit was going on and the mayor wanted to settle it and did settle it with the ACLU. Uh, and it was the right thing to do. The right thing to do is basically eliminate this ordinance from the books. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this before we move forward? All right, Harry Nunn. Bill Clark, can you please take the role?
Council Vice President Vargas.
Yes.
Cosma Wall.
Yes.
Cosma Ferry.
Yes.
Cosmo Maranzoli.
Yes.
Cosmo Donigan. Cosmo Heroyan.
Yes.
Cosmo Capiano.
Yes.
Cosmo Pizarro.
Yes.
Thank you. On to the next item. That is seven dash twenty-four zero-three. That is ordinance and amendment of title nine, chapter four of the code of the city of. Cranston, two thousand and five entitled offenses against public peace and decency. This is sponsored by Mayor Hopkins. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Any further discussion? On this? Once, well, just one, just one quick second, Director. Um, to the city solicitor, just curious, there's a motion to deny. There was a second. Um, to the city solicitor, just curious, there's a motion to deny, there was a second. Are we able, I, I just for procedural, just making sure that I'm okay with this and I understand it. Can we move forward with the roll call or do we uh, we, we have discussion? Just curious. I'm not sure how the process works on the end.
Excuse me. First and foremost, I would request that it be a motion to disapprove as opposed to a motion to approve. Uh, that's number one. Second, um, you have debate on whatever is before the committee. There's a, there would be a motion before the committee to disapprove, as I understand it. And you would, there would be a motion before the committee to disapprove and you would debate that motion.
Thank you.
I'll revise my motion to disapprove.
Thank you, Councilman Donigan. Alright.
Madam Chair, you need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. So he just re amended, I'm sorry, amended his motion.
I'll make a motion to disapprove.
And who seconded that? Was that Councilman?
Second.
Very, thank you so much. Okay, now there's discussion. Director Murray, did you? My thought?
Yes, please. Um, the, first of all, thank everyone for their compelling arguments, le, valid, legitimate. This ordinance was not uh, submitted and taken lightly at all. The um, just realizing Cranston is home to many uh, homeless individuals of a certain sector. Obviously in Ward Six at Harrington Hall, that Cranston is a part of the solution. Um, the mayor, as I believe it came out at a previous council meeting, uh, has a concern for the homeless, particularly homeless families. He's worked, tried working with the state um, this past year to find uh, locations, suitable locations for homeless families. Um, particularly with Mr. Pryor. Uh, um, so the mayor is certainly compassionate and wanna be proactive in finding housing for homeless individuals, particularly those with families. Something to do, note that the ordinance in no way criminalizes or would criminalize anyone. It is not, nothing to do with criminality at all in this ordinance. So just wanted to make that clear, that we're not trying to make anyone criminals. In listening to everyone, I'm sure we would propose if, if this were to be heard, that it could be amended, if the council would like, to eliminate the fifty-dollar fine. Um, and wouldn't find that necessary. Uh, so we'd be certainly open and encourage that to be the case. The genesis of this has been since uh, since taking office. Um, over the past several years, I'm sure it's increasing because of what's happened to society, affordability, et cetera, et cetera, for all the reasons that people here this evening articulated. But it was really complaints uh, re, received from the, at, in the administration, voluminous complaints from neighbors throughout the city. This was not just something that was dreamed up in this, in the third floor. It's a result, to reaction to neighbors again throughout the city. I believe every ward, actually, uh, was one, two, three, four, a question. I, I'm trying to find a location in my mind, but five and six for certain. So I believe, I believe every ward has been touched by it in terms of complaints uh, and concerns expressed uh, to City Hall. And, and what really what it was, it was these neighbors and people who were using city of Cranston facilities, particularly recreational facilities or nearby recreational and outdoor facilities of the city of Cranston, where homeless encampments were popping up um, and occurring. And it, it wasn't just that. You know, and th, these people were concerned about their, by being in that area with themselves in baseball fields, Faye Field, for example. Uh, people with their children, with their pets, walking their pets, that they can't live in Cranston the way they want to live in the city of Cranston. That they would take their walk with their children, but these encampments would be there. It's not just because those individuals were there, but most often times that these encampments are fundamentally unsanitary. Unsanitary for the general public, it's unsanitary for the occupants. And so it is just not a good situation for anyone to live or anyone to be near. As unfortunate as it is, you know, examples, and I hate to use this, this language, but I've seen it that, you know, there's uh, debris strewn um, around these encampments. There's used syringes, needles, uh, that paraph, drug paraphernalia, prostitution. Uh, there are buckets of feces, uh, urine, used toilet paper strewn in these areas. That's what we're looking at. Th, that's really the element we're trying to do. We're not trying to pick on anyone, but it's trying to strike a balance between the, the occupants and the citizens. So it isn't just a one-sided argument, and certainly there's good points to both sides. Um, but really it's the mayor's concern for, I'll say, the neighbors in the occupant, occupants of these encampments. Would you want your relative in one of these encampments living under those conditions? I don't think so. We wanna try to help them. We don't wanna discard them. The uh, the, that is the priority and the concern to offer sanitary conditions for, for these folks. And the intent, the ordinance is intended really to protect the citizens and to protect the occupants. Um, this i, this issue has been discussed at length with Colonel Winquist. Um, and the compassion and the efforts that the police do use and wanted to say their methods of dealing with this. Um, and so Colonel Winquist is here with Captain Dutra if they can, that, most better articulate what they're seeing out there, both in terms for, for both the residents and the occupants. So I'd like to introduce the Colonel to the uh, discussion, please.
Thank you, Chief of Staff Moretti and members of the council. Um, I agree with Chief of Staff Moretti. This is a problem we're not gonna solve here tonight. This ordinance is not gonna solve the issue of homelessness in Cranston. There's no question about that. I'm looking at this solely from the lens of public safety and health. And I can tell you, there's some serious concerns. Um, I've been out in these encampments myself. There's open fires, there's propane tanks, there's used needles and syringes. Um, there's people using drugs, there's pro, uh, prostitution that's taking place. And we are now going out looking for encampments. I can tell you right now, we have a lot more pressing needs, uh, pressing issues that the Cranston Police Department has to handle. So it's not something that we enjoy dealing with, but when we receive um, a lot of complaints from people that live in the immediate area of these encampments, we must respond and we must do something. We can't turn a blind eye. I think those residents, and unfortunately, many of them were supposed to be here tonight, and I think they chose not to be here because speaking uh, for this ordinance may not be the popular thing. As I look out, I see everyone here that's against it. And I can understand, they make a lot of good points. And we're not out there, we don't wanna go out and criminalize or arrest people that are in a dire situation. What we try to do is, and Captain Dutra will come up and explain, I wanna make it clear that we have not arrested a single person in one of these encampments for, for not leaving the area. Every single time we go out, we have a community outreach team that's comprised of a police officer. Most of the time it's Captain Dutra. And he's accompanied by a mental health clinician as well as a social service provider. So um, we often provide services or, you know, they offer the services to the people in, you know, in these encampments. And most of the time they turn down these resources. So, you know, we have to do something. We can't allow this to continue. A lot of these encampments are in areas that are difficult to reach by police or fire. We've had situations where there's been overdoses. And um, a lot of these encampments, not all, are people that come out of the ACI or one of the other institutions that are on these state complexes, and they have nowhere to go. So there is a bigger issue out there that we need to find not only temporary housing for these people, but permanent housing. And we wanna be part of the solution. We're not, we don't wanna be part of the problem. So we're trying to do it with great compassion, as the Chief of Staff Moretti said, there's a balance. And I think we need to try to find that balance. Um, finding someone that's homeless is, we're never gonna collect that fine, let's be honest. We're not gonna arrest somebody that doesn't pay the fine. It's a, it's a civil infraction only. It's not a criminal statute, and I wanna make that clear. So I've heard the word criminal um, used several times. Many of the people that are in these encampments are sex offenders. Uh, they have nowhere to go and that creates a lot of concern if they're along the bike path or near ball fields and other locations. It also makes it hard for the police department that has to track sex offenders and make sure they're properly registered. So there's a, there's a lot more to this situation. But again, I have a job to do to look at things from a public safety and health perspective. What I wanna make clear too is um, there's been some media out there that says that we're raiding these encampments. Um, I can tell you and Captain Dutra's gonna explain to you, um, that's not the case. Most of the time, somebody's there with a body worn camera that can show the interaction that takes place between the police department, the uh, mental health clinician, and also the soc, social service providers. It's a very, very respectful process and nobody's running up on encampments and arresting anybody. So I know that was falsely reported for certain bloggers and the media outlets have reported that. So um, the bottom do, bottom line is we are offering the resources. Unfortunately, there is a component uh, that are in this encampment that actually eh, like to live off the grid because there's no rules. Um, a lot of these shelters that are out there um, require that you be searched before you enter the shelter. You have to be sober. There's certain things that take place and the people in these encampments tell us that's the reason why they do not wanna go in the shelter. They wanna continue to use drugs. Uh, we do have re, resource, um, resources for recovery. Um, we're part of the Hope Initiative in Rhode Island. You know, Captain Dutra's uh, also involved in that program. Where we can get somebody into retreatment and recovery. But unfortunately, a lot of times those services again are uh, turned down. So at the end of the day, it's a, it's a complex issue. Um, I would be in favor of, if this ordinance did pass, that maybe they meet with some type of service providers. It's required they meet with somebody and at least they, we know that they're listening and they're aware of the services that we can offer them at that time. Um, right now, the only um, ability that we have unfortunately is if somebody doesn't leave public property and we warn them and there are no trespass, the other option is arrest. So this is actually the ability to try to address the problem. It's a civil infraction and then we wouldn't have to arrest somebody. And that's not something we have done so far. And we hope we can continue not to have to arrest the people that are out in these areas. I'm gonna ask um, Captain um, Dutra to come forward. And he's the guy on the front lines that is out there. Uh, he goes out far, far more than I do. I've been out there personally with him, but he can explain what he's seeing firsthand and how we handle these situations. Captain.
How you doing? Uh, Captain Justin Dutra. Uh, I'm the community outreach captain at the Cranston Police Department. I know a lot of the council people probably recognize me, worked with them. Uh, work with them through my community outreach efforts and uh, different programs that we do. Uh, the other part of my job, which uh, which is, I enjoy my community outreach part of my job best, at the festivals, raising money, giving food away, toys away. That's the best part of my job. Uh, unfortunately, I have to deal with constituent affairs complaints that come through City Hall, uh, from council people. Uh, just come, all the different avenues they come into the police department. And a lot of those constituent affairs complaints are the conditions of these camps. Uh, and uh, the, the, the conditions around the camps and the public uh, health and safety issues. Uh, when we enter these camps, uh, which I've been to dozens of them in the city, I interact with the uh, with the people living in these camps. Uh, I'm the face of the police when we're out in the camps. Uh, I'm dressed like this. Uh, we're not running people, we're not running checks on people, we're not going out there to arrest them. Uh, I do go out there with uh, uh, my crisis intervention team members, which is a program we run through the police department. We have embedded, uh, we have embedded uh, social workers that go out with us and we do offer a variety of services. I do have uh, some service sheets here that, that we do hand out that the council is welcome to uh, to look at and cruise. Uh, so we're out there, we're, we're offering the services, uh, we're responding to complaints from citizens. Uh, the majority of the concerns are the hypodermic needles and not just a couple, uh, hundreds of needles, uh, you know, with that, uh, blood, sometimes remnants of, uh, you know, heroin, fentanyl on these needles. Uh, feces, human feces, and not just a little, uh, talking lots of uh, human waste, excrement, uh, propane tanks, open fire pits, uh, rats. Uh, I mean, the conditions are, are, are atrocious and deplorable. And, and I do have compassion for the people that are out there. And, and everybody who spoke, uh, I, I respect what you do. I respect the work you're doing and I respect your point of view. And, and I hope you continue with it. And this is not, uh, this is not a slight against anybody out there or, or the points you made. I think they're all valid points, uh, and, and I agree with that, uh. But the other side of this issue is that the police department is tasked to address quality of life issues from everybody in the city. The homeless population, but also the taxpayers that have to live in these areas that are adjacent to these homeless, uh, homeless camps. And unfortunately, these camps tend to pop up in our, urban, low-income areas of the city due to the access to the bike path, access to uh, public bathrooms and stores, uh, and businesses and uh, and the bus routes. So unfortunately, that the, the people that live in these areas, they don't have the opportunity uh, to to let their children recreate, you know, out in a beautiful backyard in western Cranston away from uh, these issues or, you know, or in a Barrington or Bristol, you know, their kids have to utilize the bike path, you know? And, and they have concerns when they're going up and down the bike path and their kids are passing by needles, uh, prostitution, you know, uh, blatant sex acts going on. Uh, you know, intoxicated persons, uh, all elements of these, of these camps. And I understand that, that these are addiction issues and, and all these things, that there are bigger issues going on. But uh, I feel the police department has a responsibility to address the quality of life issues uh, of these taxpayers. And they're primarily the low-income uh, neighborhoods of the city that have to live in these areas adjacent to the camps. So, you know, wh, whether the ordinance passes or not, uh, whatever the council chooses to do on this issue, uh, I do think something has to be done to address these camps. And so the police department can effectively respond to the concerns of these taxpayers and constituents that have to live in these areas. Uh, it's the, 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 the issue is the, the camps have just, uh, they've, they've grown, uh, they've become out of hand. Okay, so I, I guess we're gonna sort of, uh, th, these are photos that I've taken, uh, at some of the things. If anybody wants to look at the condition of some of these camps, these camps are in very close proximity to parks, public play, playgrounds, uh. Uh, that's on the bike path, uh, right here in Cranston, uh, near the police station. That's also part of the bike path. That's uh, that's up, up near Walmart. Uh, so that's just some of the trash in these camps. Now, uh, I, I, I took that photo two days ago. Uh, so the smell that's coming from that trash is emanating out into Independence Way. Uh, it's affecting Independence Place, the apartments over there. Uh, the homeless people go into Independence Place, they bathe in their pool. Uh, they go in their clubhouse, hang out in the clubhouse. Uh, they've been seen defecating on their property in the open, out in their grass, uh, and we fielded a lot of complaints from uh, the tenants of Independence Place and the management there. Uh, so un, unfortunately, as much, I do have compassion for these people. But as you can see, the conditions uh, are affecting the other residents of Cranston. Uh, and we need to, we need And we need to we need to have an answer for those to those residents. We can't just say, you know, that that, you know, there's nothing that we can do. These, you know, we're going to allow this to continue like this. I don't what do I tell somebody when I'm asked to go out there? And, you know, a citizen of the city is pointing this out to me, you know, and asking, what can we do about this? And so I ask you all, what can I do about this? And what what answer can I give them if you want to continue? So as you could see, it's it's not necessarily it's it's not the people. It's not the fact that they're living out there in in these camps. It's the conditions of the camps and the danger and health and safety issues that they pose to the surrounding community and the residents of these camps. That's also part of the bike path. Stolen shop and cots, loaves. Can I ask how recent these pictures are? All these pictures are within the past year. And and I've been out to these camps, and I also anybody who would like to go out with me and go out with me, walk to the camps, meet the residents, talk to them. I have a good relationship with these people, and it's not contentious. I have harbor no hard feelings. That's Spec Field right there. As you can see, the equipment shed is cast in the shadow. They see the roof of the equipment shed. Continue. That's human feces on the side of the equipment shed at Spec Field. Little Leagues play. It's like I I understand, again, I have compassion, but that's not acceptable. So what do I tell when when I'm asked to go out there and the tents are there, and there's human waste on the side of the equipment shed, and the Little League wants to play? And there are people doing drugs, injecting drugs by the equipment shed, defecating in the grass? Do I say, you know, that there's nothing that we can do? There's nothing we're going to do because there's a housing crisis? And I understand there's a housing crisis, but I need an answer. I I need to tell these people something. That's a propane tank with a one of the largest blow torches I've ever seen. I don't know what they're doing with that, but that's concerning. That's that camp right there is at the end of, I think it's called Holloman Cemetery, at the end of Houston, Hershey Road. It's a city maintained cemetery. That's about that's about maybe thirty feet off the wood line. There's there's grave markers. There are people that have been passed away and and buried there twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. And people have to come. This was complaint driven response to this one. People go to the cemetery, pay their respects to a loved one. Thirty feet away from the gravestone is a camp like that. This camp in particular, we located numerous kitty litter bottles, rubbing alcohol bottles, and a lot of other products that are typically used to produce methamphetamines. So I do believe that was at one point a meth meth lab right off of Pontiac Avenue by Marine Drive, right in that area. That's that's down off of Warwick Avenue is that Patuxet River Management Trail that goes from the old DEM property on Warwick Avenue goes all the way through the back of Fay Field. That's one of several camps back there. So the walking trail passes right through that camp. We get a lot of complaints from the Patuxet Management Authority who maintain that trail. Because as the walkers are passing through there, they're passing through the trash, human waste, drug paraphernalia, and open sex acts happening out there in the woods. And again, I'm not I'm not classifying all these people as drug addicts and and and, you know, prostitutes and things like that. But those are activities that are very common in these in these camps. And again, I'll bring anybody out to these camps who would like to come with me. That's also that's that's on that Patuxet walking trail. And that's the Patuxet River. So the trash also goes into the Patuxet River. So I would assume there's some environmental concerns also. That's it. Those are just ones I selected. I've got hundreds. I've got videos. So, I mean, that's what we're encountering out there. I've never been involved or witnessed an arrest of anybody for trespassing, a homeless person trespassing on 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 public property. We go out there, we work with the people. If the conditions are as bad as they are, we we try to get them to a better place. We're obviously not always successful with that. If if I was successful at that, I probably wouldn't be here talking as a cop. I'd be fixing the homeless situation somewhere in Washington, but that's 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 not going to happen. So we do our best. We treat them with compassion. We offer them services. You know, I bring food out there personally. You know, part of some of our outreach is, as you all know, I, you know, through our nonprofit we created, you know, turkeys, pies. We I go to the, you know, I go to the homeless barbecues and and help hand out food. So this is not a contentious situation between me as a police officer and the homeless population. But it's I'm tasked to address the concerns of the constituents in the city. As you can see, the conditions, that's their concern. So I need an answer for those constituents, whatever that answer may be. It's about what I have, and I can anybody wants any of those packets.
Just wanted to mention, too, like these encampments, the ones you saw the pictures of, some of them have been cleaned up two or three times over. And Public Works cannot clean those places up for the because of the biohazard risk that's there. So the city is forced to hire a biohazard company to come in and clean up the needles and obviously the human feces. So there is a cost as well to trying to clean these sites. And soon as we clean them, another one pops up somewhere else. So it's a perpetual issue that we're looking for some support to try to address. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Right. All right, thank you, Councilwoman Ranzoli.
I I have a question for for legal. Is that appropriate to ask now? So as we consider this ordinance, I I just want to know if there are because this is just my assumption, but as I've said many times, I'm not a lawyer. What are the legal implications that we face if we allow this unauthorized camping to continue on on public land? Because if it's if it's unchecked, and we talk about liability as a city all the time, and I know if you if I slip and fall on the steps of City Hall on ice, I can sue the city. So when if people get hurt because of a fire out in the, you know, on city property, or someone overdoses and we can't get them Narcan. Can the city get sued?
Short answer is yes. Yes. Strictly from speaking from a legal standpoint, this is not any kind of moral judgment or anything like that. But what people need to understand, and which doesn't seem to find its way into the discussion, is that, you know, the homeless and panhandlers are not the only ones who have constitutional rights. Everyone has constitutional rights. And at some point, and it is a difficult balancing test, admittedly, but the city is certainly on notice that there's a situation with these homeless encampments. And God forbid, if one of those propane tanks were to explode, or perhaps some children wandered down there, step on a needle. The possibilities unfortunately are endless. The city is on notice, and if the city takes zero action to answer to go back and answer your question, sure, sure, the city could be sued.
So to everyone here, that's obviously a problem because we talk about this all the time. And so if if we are negligent about this and do nothing, we're we're likely to get sued. If we go against people's rights, obviously, we're likely to get sued. So either way, the city is getting sued probably. Okay, but we have to try and do something here. So as we address this ordinance, I think we also have to recognize the broader context that has brought us to this point. And Mr. Ford touched upon that. This persistent issue of homelessness in many ways is a consequence of failed leadership and ineffective policies from the state above us. Despite massive funding allocations, we continue to see growing encampments, rising crime, deteriorating public spaces. So where is that money going? Because millions of dollars have been spent, but there's little changing on the ground. That's not a problem that we can solve here in City Council. I'm not saying that we can't help in some way. The Chief of Staff said the mayor has tried to work with the state. We're not privy to those conversations necessarily, and maybe we need to have conversations of our own. I'm not saying let's pass the buck to the state, but I'm saying that the under the guise of helping, there are certainly people making money off the backs of homeless people. And it's a troubling aspect for us because cities, other cities, but including ours, are left with the fallout. Our police officers are left going to these sites, and they're putting themselves in danger as well. Children are in danger. My I can say my child runs on the bike path and comes home and says, Mom, there's needles all over near Lowe's. I say, don't run there anymore. I'm going to I'm going to call someone. But as it keeps coming up, we do need to find a way to help people. But if officers are saying that they are offering help and connecting people to sources, then what more can we do in that aspect, other than if we want to throw some funding that way? I didn't see anybody putting in the anyone who's against us, putting in the budget to help fund any help for the homeless. So we need to put our money where our mouth is, if that's what we want to do. But we need to work with the state. Otherwise, we need to consider that this is this is not going to solve the problem, but it is going to solve some health and safety hazards. We need to give the police a way to solve these problems. And I mean, this council, since I've been on it, has been committed to some real solutions. We have approved affordable housing in in multiple different developers. We forced them. It was part of, you know, they had to include twenty percent affordable housing, ten percent, fifteen percent. None of them have built anything. So maybe I personally call upon the developers to start building and to stop waiting for a council full of members who want to give them a tax treaty. Okay, because that's why people aren't building. And that's why there's no affordable housing. It's not because we haven't approved it, and it's not because the mayor doesn't want it. It's because people are waiting so that they can make more money. That's what it all comes down to. People are making money off of this. I don't think anyone here and and you can judge me however you want to judge me, but I don't think that anyone here doesn't want to help the homeless, no matter how we vote on this particular ordinance tonight. I just think we policy wise see a different way of going about it. And I think everyone here spoke from the heart, and I can say that I have been involved in in feeding the homeless and in helping at the the Dream Center, and I have given people food and clothes and taken my kids to do the same thing. But we can't solve this problem individually, but we still need to to solve the problem of what we just saw on this TV screen. We can't let we can't enable this. We can't be an enabling structure here just because, you know, we have feeling. You know, we have to choose the facts over the feelings. The fact is, there are dangerous situations with drugs and prostitution and health hazards, and the city needs to clean them up. So I don't think that we should be charging anyone who can't pay us. I I do think that needs to come out of this unless, you know, that's the only way. The chief said it can be civil versus criminal. If we don't expect to ever, you know, get the money, then that's fine. But we have to do something. We can't sit here and pretend that, you know, the mayor is a bad person because he wants to clean up these encampments. And you can say that I only support the mayor. I don't care if any of you say that. No, I support cleaning up these encampments and to stop pretending that by giving nice speeches here, we're solving a problem just because we're nice people. There's nice people sitting on this side. There's nice people sitting over here, but none of us are solving any problem just by giving nice speeches. So we need to call upon the state to spend that money on the ground, okay, in in building housing that has wraparound services to help people with addiction problems and mental health problems. And that's what we need to be doing rather than sitting here pointing fingers at each other of who's a bad person because they want to clean up these encampments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else on this discussion this evening? Councilman Dan, Dan Wall, sorry.
Thank you. This is difficult. And I I hear like Councilwoman Ranzoli both sides. I certainly was touched by the speeches I heard by the people, you know, in the audience, and I certainly have compassion for the unhoused. And as I read this ordinance, there's a disconnect between the words written in this ordinance and the compassion that was reflected in the words of Colonel Winkwist and Captain Dutra. They talked about services. They talked about helping. They talk about talking to people. They gave us packets of things that we, you know, resources to help these people. However, no matter how how we sugarcoat it, this is and maybe it's not the intention of the mayor. I'm I'm not one of those guys that said you're a bad or good guy or whatever the case may be. In fact, maybe a little Pollyanna, I believe everyone wants to do do right by by the citizens they represent and by the people who are less fortunate, the homeless and the unhoused. However, I don't think this ordinance is the right ordinance, the way it's written. That I want to be totally clear. That doesn't mean I don't believe that there should be an ordinance written. Listening to Legal and Solicitor Vidakia, perhaps if if I'm hearing you correctly, is we're kind of bound to have something in place legally. Is am I am I hearing that word correctly, Solicitor? I said, if I heard your words correctly, when the Councilwoman was speaking, you said we're we're on notice, Cranston. We have to put something in place, or we're we're liable as a city, it sounded like to me.
What I'm saying is, and what I said was, we are on, we have been put on notice of potentially a dangerous situation that affects not just the homeless, but also the people who live around there. We are on notice. And the law is pretty clear. When you're on notice and you do nothing and something bad happens, you have a problem.
So thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So I am hearing, that's what I'm hearing. So I I think something has to be done. I think there has to be an ordinance addressing this issue. I just don't think this is is quite done yet. I think it 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 should be continued. I certainly, listen, I'm no expert, but I certainly would offer any service I could to work on something that's that addresses the issues of our constituents, but also addresses perhaps a little bit more humane, the unhoused. And that's where I'd stand this evening.
Thank you. Any other council members who wish to speak on this item? Council President Moreno.
Thank you. Through the chair, if I can, I have some questions first and then some commentary after.
Absolutely.
To the knowledge of the administration and the solicitor. To the knowledge of the administration and the solicitor, are there any other cities and towns in the state of Rhode Island that have implemented any such ordinance?
Just speaking on, on myself, I have not researched that. I do not know. I know this U.S. Supreme Court decision is very recent. There may be ordinances in the works. I don't know.
And then in terms of the activities such as fires, such as shooting up drugs in public, such as public prostitution, defecation in public, don't we already have laws on the book, books that make those types of activities criminal that can be addressed on an individual basis, understanding you would need to, you know, have witnesses and things like that? But they're already criminal activities, are they not? Or civil penalties?
They're both. They're, they're, you're absolutely correct. They are criminal offenses.
So if someone lights a fire in public or someone shoots up drugs and there's a needle, I'm just having difficulty understanding how, you know, that puts us in some kind of different jeopardy as we sit here today if we don't pass this ordinance? Because we already have laws on the books that give us mechanisms to address those issues. I'm just talking, talking out loud as I'm, you know, experiencing this.
True, except based on what I'm hearing from the Colonel and, and the Captain, it's not quite that simple, I guess is the best way to put it. If, obviously, if someone calls up and says, you know, someone is here shooting drugs and the police respond and catch them in the act, fine. But we're talking about a different dynamic here. We're talking about a sort of a self-contained situation, a group of people. And the police, to their credit, are trying to handle this not as a criminal enterprise. It's sort of a blend of criminal, civil, social, all kinds of things. And I think if, if I get the message right, and the Colonel can correct me, the police really don't want to go in with those types of tactics and stop making arrests, even though I think, and again, this is not social commentary or moral judgment, from a legal standpoint, they'd be justified.
I get, what I'm trying, and I appreciate that, Solicitor. What I'm trying to convey and understand is what has changed? Other than the Supreme Court decision, I don't know what has changed for us as a, as a community because this problem has long existed. And whether or not there's been an increase in it, I, I don't know that. That hasn't been said tonight. And, and I think everyone on this council respects and understands the need for public safety. Everyone on this council respects and understands the crisis that this state is in, not just our city, in terms of homelessness, families. We respect every individual that spoke tonight and said things that a lot of us actually already knew and are concerned about. And in addition, I can say firsthand, my experience with these camps and with constituents has been over the years where it is of concern and with compassion. And the Police Department has done an outstanding job over the years in addressing those situations. One comes to light, it was around May of 2022. There were residents in the Patuxah area that were concerned. There was, you could see evidence of clearly, obviously, an, an encampment. It was at that point at least abandoned. The reasons for that, I, I don't know. I'm not privy to. And there was environmental damage. There were health hazards. There was melting, burning of plastics of large degree that then the residents were, you know, experiencing, which I'm sure probably caused some of them to be alerted to where this encampment was in the woods. And there was clear evidence of that when you went there, where it was at least 50 feet up some trees that they were completely singed. And the residents volunteered their time to clean up what was abandoned. Myself and my husband did as well. The DPW department was great in terms of removing, it was a truckload or more of, of debris. And the police handled it with a lot of compassion. The residents understood and expressed their concern for the people that were homeless, the situation that they were in, and that there was no easy answer. It was eye-opening for some in the community and, and they expressed praise for the fact that our city addressed it in a compassionate way. And what does that mean? The police didn't come in heavy-handed. They came in with resources, with options. But as has been stated tonight, not everyone in those situations wants to avail themselves of those options. I am at a loss tonight to see how this ordinance is going to facilitate some type of solution to the situation that we're in. I'm just not seeing it. And, and that's where I'm at right now.
Director Murray, did you want to add?
Please.
Okay.
Yeah, just some of the things, I think some of the questions weren't unanswered. And it was interesting observation that in order to enforce, there are current laws on the books to enforce violations of prostitution or with the doing drugs, defecating. But you have to catch people in the act. You can't do it after the fact. It ain't gonna stick. There's that point. But there's the other point that if you do catch them in the act, now we're going to criminalize them if they commit a crime. So we're changing something that's a civil matter, and we're going to criminalize the, the occupants of these facilities. So there is a difference in the way the law is applied. How it's changed, it's been the proliferation. It's just a mounting and mounting and mounting. And we're responding to the residents and their concerns about their safety, the safety of their children, and the safety of their pets also, because people have said that, and the enjoyment of our public facilities. To send your child to the toilet over there at Speck, Speck Field, I don't think we want to do that. I don't think we should expose our citizens to that. So that's really it. And then we have to deal with how things changed. Then we're dealing with the remains of the totality of those activities as a whole. So we can't individualize this to acts. If we do, we're going to criminalize people under the law. And we, Captain Dutra said it best. What do we tell the law-abiding citizen that wants to use the facilities and enjoy the city of Cranston as a beautiful city? Thank you.
Thank you. I fully understand that the police are concerned with our safety and the safety of those people that are the people that are in these encampments. And I do agree with Councilman Wall and Council President Marino. I don't see how this ordinance, as it's written, solves anything until we can assure the people that are homeless that there are enough beds for them to go to. All we're going to do is sweep them from one spot to another. And the problem is just going to continue because they have nowhere to go. And we have not, if there's anybody in this room, including myself, that thinks that we've done enough to develop housing and give shelter to these people, then we're lying to ourselves because we have not done it. We haven't built a single unit of affordable housing in this city in 13 years. And we have not encouraged developers to build them. We've discouraged them by not helping them. So this ordinance does not solve the problem. I don't see how it changes anything. I don't see what it's gonna, what it's gonna do. Let's be part of the solution. This is just part of the problem. That's all this ordinance is. It's part of the problem. It's not part of the solution. I totally empathize with Captain Dutra and Colonel Winkquist. I wouldn't want to be in your position to have to go there and deal with this. But the bottom line is, making a law that makes it illegal and fines people, it's, it's not the answer. I'm sorry. It's just not the answer. We need to come up with a solution. We need to say to these, to the people that are in this situation, we need you to go somewhere. And then we've exhausted every possibility, and we have a bed for them to go to. Then maybe we can say, okay, now we have to move them. But until we get to that point where they have a place to go and we've offered every possible ounce of help to them, which we're not doing, then I can't see how this ordinance could absolutely positively change anything. It's just going to move them from one spot to another, and then they go from that spot to another spot. And until they have a bed to go to, they're just going to keep putting tents up. And we're going to be complaining about it. I live on the bike path. I see it every day. I don't like to walk by it, but I do. We need to, we're kidding ourselves if we think we've done enough to help solve this problem because we haven't. Not one of us in this room has. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Councilman Papalascos.
Thank you, Council Vice President Vargas. Now, I'm not on this committee, so I don't have a vote this evening. You know, a lot of great points for me tonight on, on both sides of this ordinance. You know, the part of this ordinance where it's no criminal implication, I think is important. And when I see Colonel Winkquist here and, and Captain Dutra, I see our Public Safety Department trying to figure out a way to put a tool in the toolbox so they can help people. I don't think they're trying to in any way, or they said they don't, they don't arrest anyone, or they're not trying to hurt anybody. I mean, I, I'm not on this committee, but maybe this committee should consider amending this ordinance or changing it, increasing the time, removing the fine. At the end of the day, when Captain Dutra is here telling us that he's going in with the Crisis Intervention Team to help people, I want to see more of that, you know? So maybe this ordinance would spur more help or give them the tools they need that they can help people. So like I said, I don't have a vote on this. A lot of great discussion tonight, and, you know, I just hope we can get the tools that the Police Department need so that they can help. The situation that is, is plaguing the entire state and the country. So, thank you.
Council President, go ahead. Thank you, Council Vice President Vargas. I don't know how my council colleagues would feel about this suggestion, but perhaps we have further discussions to craft an ordinance that makes it clear that this is not a criminal action, that this is a civil action and incorporates the crisis intervention option. I really do think that we need a much more thoughtful approach. I think my council members, everyone is pretty much articulated this evening who has spoken, that we understand the concerns. We also understand that this is a gargantuan task and a gargantuan problem. And I say that because the state hasn't figured it out. And I don't know of any city that has. So I would be open to working with the administration, working with the Police Department to maybe form some type of, you know, type of subcommittee conversations, whatever we need to do to facilitate a solution in the form of an ordinance, if that's what our public safety, you know, component of the city believes is appropriate, to make sure that we, we do this in a more thoughtful manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I'm just going to say a few words before I call on, on a few others, sorry. And is that I've, what I've heard this evening, what I've heard both folks here that are in the chamber with us this evening on Zoom and even from the council members, including what I've been hearing, and I think we all have to echo to what Council Member Ferry has mentioned. You know, this is, the homelessness and housing crisis is increasing, and it is a crisis here in our state as it is nationally. It's a crisis nationally. I, I agree in terms of, I, I don't think that this ordinance before us this evening is going to be a solution. I think instead that while we know, we were told through the Police Department that we're not giving anyone a fine, I, if this was to pass, is not to say that we can't give them a fine because it was, it's, it's on the record. I, I want to thank the Police Department at least in providing these prevention programs and telling us everyone that they're working with to find also some sort of a a systemic solution, which is what I also heard from ACLU saying we need to find a systemic solution and not criminalize folks. I think the state has been working on the housing concerns that we've been, all been hearing and watched. I don't think it's going to be an overnight fix. I also don't think it should be continued to be talked, and really, there should be action. But we are starting to move at the state with that action. But as a city, we need to also do our own due diligence as well. And we have seen developers that have come before us and where we have pushed as a council the 20%, if not more, of affordable housing. We had a housing board that was dormant and was brought back up. I think there was a lot of council members who led a lot of those efforts back up. But yes, there's always so much more that we could do and go the extra mile. I too had that question, Council President, in terms of what other municipalities in our state is currently putting forward in ordinance? Because in so many other communities, maybe in Rhode Island or, or outside of Rhode Island, they're working together with, with the unhoused community and finding maybe creative and innovative ways that we can help in providing some sort of mental health funding, but also case managers as well within the city government and state government. Because a lot of it could also be a mental health barrier. And we need to continue to advocate also for funding on that side as well because it is a ripple effect. I think it is for all of us, particularly maybe just speaking for myself, a fundamental right for each and every one of us to have a roof over our head, to have access to food, access to that healthcare that could potentially be a preventative in terms of maybe mental healthcare or so. But by placing at least, placing a fine and an ordinance before us could criminalize particularly the marginalized communities and will, or could affect then someone from access to a affordable housing. And then there's a ripple effect there that it's the never-ending circle that now somebody's looking for affordable housing, but now they have a fine, and that was a fine that was potentially not paid. And now they're not able to potentially get a job now from there if they wanted to. There's a lot of variables that go into place. I, that's why I don't think we should be posing a fine, particularly what does break my heart as well is people's belongings, which we heard this evening as well. Because what if someone has nowhere to put their belongings and they are maybe going to work or seeking healthcare assistance or any other means, but they have to do during the daytime or whenever, and they leave their items behind? I, I don't believe in tossing all of their stuff, however. I, I don't believe in tossing all of their stuff. However, um, yes, the fact that we have to hire a company, biohazard company to clean up human feces, and not the cost that it involves, but the fact that it's taking place in a public place where we have, whether it's a children on fields or, uh, bike path as well, is, um, is of concern. But I don't think this ordinance is particularly going to address the situation. And I'm being a little bit, I'm sounding like a broken record, but I will sound like that broken record because I just don't think that that's where we're going to get to the root problem of this. And, um, and so, um, I, I wanna, I, I'd love to work with, with our departments to make sure what else we can do because it is a fair ask from our police departments. What do we do when we get there or we get called? And they're not arresting anyone or fining. So as a counselor, um, I, I am all in favor with you, Council President, and continuing to work and figure out ways and set up, whether it's community meetings, work with organizations and figure out what else can we do? And as a city, set particularly also some funds aside that we could also provide on our end. Some sort of maybe, I don't know, I could be wrong in saying this, a stabilization fund where we could address um, concerns and really also be able to provide where they're on our side, work with our senior centers and work with C cap as well in a much closer way to, um, provide assistance. Um, I wish I had the magic wand to fix this problem, but I don't. And I think when many of us come together, we are in that, um, we could provide a lot of our suggestions as to what we can potentially do and continue to advocate and advocate, um, for ways that we could, um, provide that quality of life that everyone does deserve. But I think that adding a fine right now, I'm just trying to figure out uh, the purpose of putting a fine on here. If we're not arresting, if we're not, um, given that fine in general, then why even, why introduce this? Like, it's almost like, I, I just don't think we, we, we should be arresting. And I don't think we should, we should fining for all the reasons that I just noted. And so, you know, we're sometimes we say we don't wanna be the first in the city of Cranston to come with innovative ways to solve things. We're like, oh, I don't, we're not sure. We'll see what it is. Well, by passing this ordinance, I don't wanna be known in the city of Cranston as being the first to pass this. Absolutely not. And I will be voting against this this evening. And I do look forward, uh, if it comes before a vote, but I do look forward to continuing to work, um, with each and every one of you, including those that are here as well this evening, um, on ways that we can potentially bring this before the housing board that we have the housing and also advocate and talk with our Cranston Housing Authority as well. That's another avenue that we can continue to work, but also that mental, uh, healthcare service and preventions that we are. And I know we're, could be limited and I don't wanna talk too much because I wanna give obviously the opportunity for my colleagues to, to open. But with that being said, either way, the way this stands as it is, um, I can't be supportive of this. Regardless of whatever the United States Supreme Court decided, I will not be able to be in support of this this evening. Councilwoman Herosian.
I would just like to say that I think everyone here in this room has said something or thought about this tonight. It's a very sensitive issue. We need to do something and do a lot more federally, statewide, in city and town. I cannot support this with a fine in it. Um, but I want something because I don't believe one second Captain Dutra or Colonel Winkquist came here asking us to ask for arrests or ask for money. They came here asking us for help, how they can help this community better. And we all owe it to the community of homeless, the neighbors that live nearby. I live right here in Ward two, and we have homeless people living in CVS Parkinla. I have a homeless veteran living in Burger King. And I've stopped there to ask the workers how we can help him. And he simply doesn't want any help. Um, we all need to. If there is a subcommittee, a task force, I would volunteer and be honored to be on it and work with this community outreach. I think it's something we need to bring a lot of different groups together at the table and work together. Is this gonna be solved tonight? No. This month? No. We're going into winter. Propane heat and scares me. Torches for drugs scare me. I personally don't wanna go on the bike path alone without somebody with me. And I don't know if those people are homeless or drug users. There could be a big difference here. But my thoughts is everyone deserves to have a roof over their head, food, basics. But we also need to support our first responders, police, fires going in there. I don't want a massive fire wiping out a whole encampment this winter. It's not safe for those people either. We need to do something and come up with some ideas. Are we able to tonight? No. But the one thing I can tell you is I will not be voting for this tonight. I will hope it gets continued and rewritten a better version. And I don't care who put it in, has nothing to do with that. If something's good, it's good. If it's bad, it's bad. I don't care about party lines or supporting anybody.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One note that I do wanna add actually is that it was probably in 2022, and I wanna put that out on the record. There was a proposal that came before us as a city council as we're talking about our unhoused community. And it was about the pallets that were replaced over at, down in Cranston. There were many, not many, but there were a few who did not want it. We had the opportunity to vote for it. That could have at least provided some temporary housing for some of the unhoused community, particularly during winter time as we will be approaching. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was proposed at one time and it did not pass. Uh, it was a big, and so.
That's incorrect. It was the resolution, because I wrote it, was to not have the powerhouses, not to have them. And it was voted against. It was voted against not to have them. Nobody proposed to have them. That never actually happened. So that's, there is a difference between the two is all I'm saying. So if we wanna be correct in matter of the fact, nobody proposed having them. And the ones that were already set to be in Providence have gone, I don't know how long and spent, I don't know how many millions of dollars are not zoned properly and nobody's living in them. So when we wanna do things, we do have to do them correctly, but I'm only saying it just so that the facts are correct on the record.
I appreciate that. Thank you. But there was that opportunity to go on the pallet. I don't wanna go outside of the conversation with her today, but it was, I, 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 I remember voting and it was a big conversation. Oh, okay. But I, right, where I, I, for the record, I wrote it that we should be having those pallets in the city of Cranston. But, um, either way, Councilmember Donigan.
Thank you. First, I, I just wanna say, um, yeah, I mean, I strongly disagree with the, with the ordinance as proposed this evening. But, you know, I, I served with Mayor Hopkins on the city council. His desk was next to mine for a term. Um, he's not a, a cruel person. He's not a bad person. We disagree on this policy, but it's not a, a, a comment on him as a person. The same goes for, uh, Colonel Winkquist, who, you know, I've been a, had the, the honor of working with for three terms. He leads a, the best police department in the state, um, and is a compassionate and, and, and good man. And I, I, um, and I mean that sincerely. And I've recently had the opportunity to begin working with Captain Dutra as members of the YMCA board. And, uh, we're very fortunate to have both of these people at, uh, at the helm here in, in Cranston. So my, my disagreement with this as a matter of policy is not a commentary on any one sort of moral character. I think someone mentioned the, the UN Declaration of Human Rights, and it does in nineteen forty-eight, a right to adequate housing. And we have not lived up to that. We have not lived up as a state, as a country, as a world, as a local community to, uh, those promises. And it's a failure on all of us. I mean, we, we haven't done enough. I've been here for three terms. I haven't done enough. There's a lot of things I wish we, we could have done that we haven't. Uh, there are proposals that we've put through that have been shot down. There are things that, you know, probably would get run out of town if you, if you did, um, put forth. So of course, there's, there's more we have to do. I don't see how passing this ordinance actually addresses the root causes of homelessness. As Mr. Wojcik pointed out, it's issues of economics, of mental health, of, of the housing, um, public health. There are so many issues at play here that create this issue. Nothing here in this ordinance tonight is going to address those. So I think we should continue, uh, discussing the matter. Whether, you know, I, I would rather see this continued than voted down because if we vote it down under council rules, I don't think we can bring the same subject up. So if a, if a kind of subcommittee wants to get to work on this and work with public safety, administration, council leadership, and I mean that as members from both parties and legal, I would, I would rather see that happen so the conversation doesn't end on how to address what we see in public, public places. But we've gotta focus on addressing the root causes of this and not the symptoms. And we need to do it in a compassionate manner. Um, and I think we can do a better job at that than, than what's before us this evening. So I'll be, I, I will vote to continue. Um, if it's a matter of voting this up or down this evening, I will be voting against it.
Thank you. Council, uh, President Marino.
If, if as a body, if we're inclined to continue it, given the, um, depth of the discussion that needs to take place and, uh, the revision of the legislation, I'm thinking of two things. One is, um, if it's gonna be continued, it should be continued, I think, at least three months for us to tackle this with the appropriate stakeholders involved. That's just my suggestion. The other option is if it does get, if the motion to deny carries forward, then that doesn't preclude us from having another ordinance because the language will be significantly different. It's not gonna be similar to this. So, uh, I'm not sure how others feel on that.
Couldn't, could I, I, I do wanna just ask, um, the housing board that we have, is that still active? Do we know, uh, Councilman Donigan?
Yeah, so I can, I'll, I'll speak to that. Um, the housing, um, several years ago, I know some members of the public mentioned we should create a, a task force. So several years ago, uh, and it was passed with the support of my colleagues, so I'm not trying to take all the credit. I worked with, but I worked with, um, Annette Born from the Rhode Island, uh, Housing Works Rhode Island to revive the dormant Cranston Housing Commission. And this was to bring people from the Health Equity Zone, from Rhode Island Housing, the Planning Department, Finance Department, um, community stakeholders, uh, together to work on addressing the issue of housing and housing affordability here in Cranston. Um, we have had great, great, great members of the public, experts in the field as a member, as members of that commission. And, um, they can speak for themselves, but I think they would, they would also recognize that it hasn't been as fruitful as, as they would hope. And that's for, due to many speed bumps in the way, both institutionally and I think culturally, politically here within Cranston. So it's still a thing. Um, there has been a significant turnover in, in membership that they're trying to fill. And I think some, and I'll leave it at that.
Or Campa Bianca.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Um, this is probably, oh, not probably, this is the saddest meeting I've been to since I've been on the council. The pictures, the speeches and everything, it's just horrifying. Um, and as I typically do, I find myself smack in the middle. Um, we can't charge someone fifty dollars. Um, you can't take someone's belongings away just because they don't have a closet to put them in. Uh, on the other hand, Captain Dutra and the Colonel come to us and they say, we need tools. We need to give them those tools. So I agree with, uh, the council president when she says we need to look at this further and continue it. I don't know if procedurally, I could just make a motion now to continue uh, till the January meeting. That would be three months away. But I don't want the prediction of one of the people that most eloquently said, we're politicians and we'll do nothing. I wanna make sure that we do something in those three months.
I don't think you can continue till January.
Months. That's why you picked that. November. I'm sorry, November.
Council President Marino.
You know, um, I think it's best, best if we, um, maybe as a body do, do the motion to continue for three months if people, people are inclined and in that interim, we can, uh, see about having that committee with, um, the public safety partners, um, council members, administration, um, and that doesn't preclude us from, from doing what we need to do.
I, I have no problem in doing so, at least supporting that. Um, but I wanna make sure that there's actually work that will be done come November, right? Or come October, that it's not just postponing this, right? So, and I think we all know that we will work on that, right? And so, um, and I think that's the intention. So we are all clear. And I would assume that obviously, Council President, I, I, your word is always, I would take it as word of integrity. And I know that we will. But I just wanna make sure that we, we really work on.
I can tell you in my mind, I'm sitting here, what I envision is this month's August meeting. I'll introduce as new business, uh, a pertinent, either resolution or, or ordinance, whichever ends up being required legally so that we can have a subcommittee that includes those particular, um, partners. Thanks.
That's actually, that's great. Yep. All right, great. Uh, Councilmember Donigan, and did you have your hand up to Councilwoman? Oh, okay.
Um, I, I just wanna add for internal purposes, because it was mentioned that there's nothing in the budget to, to deal with these things. I was reminded that in our first, our first term together, Council Vice President, uh, the fiscal year twenty twenty budget, we, uh, our, our caucus, we added ten thousand dollars, which I know is not enough. But it was, we created a rental assistance program funded through the city of Cranston administered by C cap. And the reason I bring that up is because if there's anyone experiencing, um, homelessness right now, that can help with, um, a security deposit, that can help with first month rent or can help people who are experiencing economic issues that might not be able to, to make rent. So that's administered through C cap, but it's funded through the city of Cranston.
Yep.
I'll withdraw my motion to disapprove. Make a motion to continue for three months to November.
There's a motion as a second? Great. Motion and there's a second? Any discussion? If not, to the clerk, can you please take a roll?
Council Vice President Vargas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wall?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ferry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rizzoli?
Yes.
Councilwoman Heroyan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Donigan? Councilwoman Capiano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marino?
Yes.